Good evening. Welcome to the August 5, 2021 Zoring Board of Appeals meeting. The time is now 7:08 and I, Tim Martin, call the meeting to order. I would like to remind our members in the audience that this meeting is being broadcast live by NCTV and is also being recorded for future broadcast. At this time, I ask that we conduct a roll call for attendance.
Tim Martin.
Present.
Joe Sebastiano.
Present.
Josie Cordahi.
Present.
David Axberg.
Present.
Thank you. Our first hearing tonight is scheduled for 7 o'clock for 35 Pine Street Comprehensive Permit. I want to ask that Mr. Quaglier's attorney, O'Shaughnessy, please have a seat at the microphone and join us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So if you want to get us up to speed, we've been through this quite a bit and I think we have a few open issues to talk about, if not too many.
Yeah, if I forget any, Richard, Dan, please, please remind me of what they are. But as the board recalls, we spent a long time, a few weeks ago, going through the conditions of the decision. There were a couple outstanding issues that have been discussed and, I believe, revised. If you pull up the decision, the draft decision, please, there was a couple of changes made along the way in paragraph B2 on page, I'm not sure what page it is. Keep scrolling up, keep going. Going, keep going, keep going. Right there. Is this the, can you go up another page, please? There it is. So there was a question about the number of fire hydrants on the plants and whether the chief has seen them. Jamie had, Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Engineering had actually reached out to the fire chief and I believe he added a second hydrant on lot 5, so there's hydrants servicing the site. There's one on lot 5 and lot 8. That's shown on the plans that have been revised through August 2nd or 5th or whatever the date on the plan is. I've given them to Stephanie, so you folks have them. If you could.
So just before we take off on that, Mike, I mean, I don't think we have, the chief didn't say, he didn't confirm that he approved the hydrant locations, did he?
He did, he did. So, I don't know, maybe he didn't catch up with the flurry of emails, but he has approved the hydrant locations as well as the checklist from February?
We approved the site plan, but are the locations on the site plan?
Yeah, they were added.
Hydrants are, yeah.
He brought up, because I couldn't find them, I don't know.
Yeah, they're hard to see. If you scroll down, right, that sheet might be it, right there. There's a, there was a hydrant right here on lot 5 and there's a hydrant here at the beginning of lot 8. So basically the front and end. And this, like I said, the second one was added because the chief wanted it, so we just added on.
Yeah, so I confirmed with the chief, because he has written an approval letter on 2019 July and he's confirmed that that approval letter was also based on the February 9 checklist.
Yeah, I saw that part, okay.
The approval letter, the 29th, July 20th, was silent as to the hydrants, I believe. So, okay.
But he did, he did confirm that, he saw the hydrants.
So again, if these, you know, my comments earlier in the week was, do we even need these? But if they stay and they stand, because we complied with it, so I don't have an issue if they were to stay in. Let me see, if we go down to...
F?
Yes, section F.
So F3 is the new street lamp condition?
Right, so we, so if you recall, two meetings ago, there was discussion about the lighting at the entrance. It was the board's preference to have a street lamp installed, there's a pole nearby. Al agreed to install, the town's going to take over paying for it and all that good stuff. And I think Dan added this in, it was just a quick oversight and we're fine with that. So if we scroll down to, it's now F10. This was the...
What about F7?
F7, did we miss F7? Oh.
We added the exception for the six-foot section.
So, in our last discussion, there was a provision in there, and I thought we talked about it, maybe we didn't, about maintaining 10 feet all around the property line, the boundary, the perimeter of the site. And one of our houses are only 6 feet away. Lot 4, if you want to put that up, Stephanie. So, right here is the one location that we can't, so that's just 6. So that's the only spot and that's why that except was added into the decision.
And there's 10 feet between?
Yeah, between the structures.
Between 3 and 4.
Yeah, between all the structures, we have 20 feet, I believe, or over 20 in some cases, so. And there's no wall or fence or anything going on that property line? So, along, so, could you scroll down, please? So we have a fence going along this property line here.
Yep, and a wall on the other one.
And a wall on the other one and a fence on the top, there's nothing planned for up there.
What is beyond that then?
What's on the other side of it?
It's another property.
Just in the property, I'm not quite sure.
Is it brush or something right now?
That's a good question, I can't, I can't answer that, I don't know.
It's pretty much woodland area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's woodland, but...
There are property owners there though.
Right, but same, but it's not like something that requires a fence because it's just wooded at the moment?
Yeah, I think, I think it's all wooded and brushed, otherwise we, I'm sure Al would have said, let's put a fence up there too.
Remember from the aerials, it was all woods.
Yeah.
But I, you don't know how long that'll last.
Yeah, I know, I mean, eventually the property owner might want to put a fence up there.
The downside of the six-foot is you can't get a, you can't get a truck or anything through that.
Well, on the other side, you can.
Right, between the two, between the two houses.
Right.
And that's, that's how they're going to have to be constructed. You gotta, he's gonna have to put a lot of thought into building this so he doesn't box himself in.
But to get a truck through, you have to be on the neighbor's property to get through, right?
No, there's, there's about 10 feet. There's about, so there's five and a half feet there, yeah, so you'd have to straddle the property line to be able to get back there.
The question would be, what if they start putting up fences between their properties?
I, if you, we can put a decision in the, in the permit that says no fences on the property lines. I'll put it in the homeowners association docs, I have no issue with that.
And what do you guys think?
Yeah, I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
I mean, my only fear is fire, I mean, fire apparatuses or something getting through there.
That's why if there's no fence there in the future between 3 and 4, at least a merchant vehicle could go between those.
I mean, 10 feet's gonna be narrow, I mean, the trucks are like eight and a half if I remember correctly.
Well, he's saying it's 20.
Well, I, yeah, I thought it was 20, but it's not, it's over 10.
They'd probably go to the, cut out the angle behind the two yards if they had to.
So I guess the issue is like, if you are stopping them from having fences on these properties, I mean, that's obviously a way to make sure that the property has some openness.
I honestly, maybe, now looking at it, you could go, I mean, a fire truck could go down and turn around the back end area and go right over the back.
That's what I...
As long as there's no fences, right?
Right, yeah, but they'll take a fence down.
I just don't like, I like fences sometimes on my property.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, now that you look at it.
Yeah, depending on what, hopefully, hopefully they're sellable without fences.
I don't, yeah, just in terms of the code, you don't need to, we don't need to provide fire apparatus access around a single-family house. It's only required for multi-family houses.
That's realistically what that's for, in one sense. That's why you have a setback on pretty.
I think, I think you probably, as the chief, you probably wouldn't go between the houses anyway. If it was a structural fire, that's not...
The hose is, the hose is smaller than the truck, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're not, I mean, it would attack from the street.
Yeah, and ladders staging inside and back.
I guess it comes down to, do we want him to put in a stipulation, no fences, or don't control it?
The problem is, it's not just fences, you'd have to really say, there can't be anything obstructing. Because it's not offensive, someone might put a stone wall or they might put a playground, I mean, who knows?
So do nothing, you're saying, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about it.
Given that the fire chief signed off on the plan and I, I've never seen a condition like that for single-family houses.
I guess the only reason we're talking about it is because the six-foot issue came up.
Right.
It is pretty much solid, you know, there's, it's all woodland behind the backside of that.
Yeah, I know, but you can't always rely on what the list of the properties are going to look like around you.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Yeah, the house next door is on... That dwelling right there. Then he has the school bus parked out there.
So in terms of the back of the site, because it's residential homes you're talking about here?
Yeah.
So, I mean, unless it was a, another, so we have a buffer in the, you know, in the C1D zone, so there are buffers to residential properties. So if anything happened to the rear development, does it have to comply with the general provisions?
Right, I mean, trees can always be cut down if the property owner decides, right?
Sure, but I mean, there is screening provisions in the zoning bylaw for budding residents, so it wouldn't...
Yeah, I'm fine without the requirement for deletion of fences and other things. If, if they want to draft it that way, they can, they can, if they don't want to, they don't have to.
The next paragraph that was, was discussed the last time was F10. And this was the one where we discussed being able to install the building foundations in a dense-grade road. And then there was an alternate, there was a subsequent requirement that no, no house construction until a binder coat came on. We thought that wasn't necessary. I actually think Bill McGrath from Beta is the one who suggested doing the dense grade. Al had spoken with the department, they didn't seem to have an issue with it. I spoke with Rich today, he had come up with a hybrid solution. And it was to allow three houses, Rich, and to see how it goes. And if it became a problem, then the applicant would have to install the binder course. So I thought that was a good workaround, but ultimately, it's, it's up to what you guys are comfortable with.
Well, I thought the issue, though, was, was that Al didn't want heavy equipment going over a paved road.
To, to, yeah.
So, isn't that going to be moot once the foundations are done and all the site work is done?
I, I can't say if it's going to be moot or not. I suppose he could, he may still, he may have a lull on site or something like that, or something, or maybe a small little rig trucking back and forth to do the plantings, I don't know. I think the concern was, you know, we're putting down, we're going to have a gravel base and then we're going to put asphalt on top of it and it might get all chewed up and destroyed, then you're kind of ruining your base when you're just constantly going over the, the base, it's, you know, being pounded down and further compacted. But again, it's ultimately up to you guys. I thought, I thought Rich had a good workaround, let's, you know, let's do a little test case and if it doesn't work, then it has to be paved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the idea of the dense grade up to the point of the foundations, but I prefer after that to have, have the binder coat down. My understanding is that, I'm no expert in this area, but my understanding is that if you have a good base down, any potential for damage to the binder is limited. He controlled the site and to Dan's point, I think the heavy, you do the site work, most of the heavy equipment is out of there. I understand why he wants to do it that way, foundations and all that, tight site. But I think, from my recommendation, I think we're better off having the binder coat down prior to the frames going up.
Sure, I mean, again, that's, you three are deciding it, so.
You are not an expert in this area.
Yeah.
Is that contradict with Rich is saying?
I think...
Well, no, I mean, if you, if you go with that option, then my condition is really not needed because you're...
The building department's the one that wanted this, right, the binder?
Yeah.
The actual, the actual bylaws, I think, of the town say that there has to be a binder before building is built.
Correct.
The road, the road actually has to be in place and so the, so the caveat of that was that the zoning board was allowing dense grade for the foundations because of the heavy equipment still used for that. But after the foundations and septics are all in, then you go back to the binder coat. I mean, that's keeping for town, town bylaws as far as I'm concerned. And there's a reason for it, it keeps it neater and cleaner and...
And safer.
And safer for...
Yeah, there'll be inspections.
People are going to be driving in, I mean, you're not going to stop neighbors from driving in a property to see what it looks like. I know the, the one down here, when the first house went up, I was driving through it, trying to figure out, this didn't make any sense. I couldn't figure out where I was going. It makes sense now.
Right, so like I said, ultimately, it's up to you folks.
Yep.
And F12, again, I, it was prior to the committee construction activities.
Do you want to just close it out, this discussion?
Yeah, I think we should close each one out, right?
Sure, that's, that's, that's fine with me, yeah.
So if the census is binder, then?
Binder after the site work and, and the foundations is...
Okay, so as, as it's drafted?
As it's drafted, right there, yeah.
As it's drafted, okay.
Again, the new, I guess it's F12, I'm sorry, F13, we've, we've complied with the fire chief's requirements, so, I'm sorry, the F12 down the bottom, so it stays in, stays in at this point, it's satisfied. In I1, I think this is a typo from before, a carryover, sidewalks was changed to walkways because technically it's a walkway. And then in section I subsection B, we originally had it as the last market unit would be, the CO would be withheld as surety to ensure completion of the ways. Rich, in speaking with Rich, he had, he had some concerns about that. So what it, what it's been changed to is provided that the applicant may post a surety in the form acceptable under the Norfolk subdivision rules and regulations. For the final coat of pavement on the roadway together with a license to the town of Norfolk, I'm not quite sure what, which, what license would we need?
Well, it says it's a private way.
Oh, okay, that's fine. To the town to install the same in a form acceptable to town council and to obtain the sixth CO prior to completion. I don't, I don't have an issue with that, I think that's fine.
So, Rich, does that resolve your concern?
Yeah, it does.
It, the sixth and final, not, not, not a timeline, but a trigger, the sixth and final certificate of occupancy.
There's, there's eight houses in the subdivision, though.
Right.
The two are affordable, this is the market, the last market unit.
But what about the affordable ones?
Well, we talked to...
Just ask.
Would be built.
We talked about doing a timeframe from the foundation, is that...
That was in your suggestion today.
Yeah.
I think this is what Dan had added in, again, I...
Tying it to the, to the CO, it just gives the incentive to the developer to finish it because they're not going to be able to sell a marker at unit, and that's the theory, is that that's where the money is, is in the marker at unit, so.
Yeah.
And again, I was, I was, whatever mechanism...
Accomplish, but I think it makes sense in terms of that to accomplish the same goal. My only concern was that it was, again, we don't know, hopefully it builds us out quickly, I'm sure he does too, but we don't know predictability. And then when the residents come in...
Especially where it's private, maybe if it's public, it'd be different. And I think where this is, it's not like CCONC is public, this is a private driveway in a sense that...
It is, but when the calls come to my office, it doesn't... And I understand from a resident's standpoint, right, it's, so it's helpful that we have something in there so they have something to point to.
Yeah, again, I, I think the CO, yeah, I think the CO is sufficient, but I, I'm not opposed to the belt and suspenders.
I have no problem if it satisfies Rich's concerns or...
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the way it's drafted, I think.
Well, they, they made a change though, right? Did you make a change, Rich?
Well, with those...
Yeah, this is kind of just a variation on what I was talking about. So I had a more of a timeframe in terms of, you know...
You were using dates or...
I was using dates, months, in terms of, you know, 18 months from the first foundation, but accomplished is the same purpose, so that's fine.
And I, I believe that was the last of the changes, last of the highlights from, from what we had discussed before?
Now, we do have the revised inspection checklist.
Oh, yes, so at the last meeting, there was some discussion about inspection checklist. Jamie Bissonnet had prepared one, Rich had edited it. We, we had a phone call with Rich the other day, then Bill McGrath from Beta chimed in and seemed to agree with some of the changes to the form that Jamie had proposed. And we had sent that over to Rich this noon, he was comfortable with it, with some, some provisions, adding in an inspection of the, the walkway, Rich, that was the last part, right?
The walkway and, and also the, the dense grade too.
And the dense grade, right, which is fine, we, that, that's fine.
That's what we have in front of us.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, what you have in front of you.
And I think that's kind of what we did from, for 194 Main anyways, and just to give some guidance for inspections, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, I'll open it up to, to the board, to the public, anybody who questions, concerns? There's nobody from the public in attendance, so any board members have any questions?
I'll just ask it, so everything's been accomplished as far as these final things and final cross the Ts, dot the Is?
Yes, there's...
We just have the waiver list, so I think, I think that's done, I just need to clean it up.
Okay.
Do you want to run through it one more, one last time to make sure we're...
Um, I mean, I think you sent over all those, I thought that was, it looked good, it looked like everything was accomplished.
So basically, you're just making sure all of these...
The only thing, the only thing we kind of, I thought we're looking for was the final plan that we're supposed to look and see.
Yeah, you, we've submitted the final plans this evening, they were reviewed by Bill McGrath.
Correct.
And, and he was, he was fine with them, right?
He was.
Yep.
I looked at him as well, but the issues that were, final versions that were needed were addressed.
We don't sign those tonight, so Al has something to give his wife.
No.
He was so concerned last night.
You could give, I guess, conceptually, close the hearing and vote and prove it, that would be something. But not, you wouldn't sign anything yet, because it has to be filed with the clerk and then the appeal period.
Yeah, I thought there was an appeal period, yeah.
So...
I think the main goal is to try to close the hearing tonight, right?
Well, I would ask that you vote to approve it, subject to the conditions and, and maybe sign, sign the signature page and we'll have it ready to go, to be filed.
I just want to confirm, though, that, Mike, you're okay with the last waiver list iteration?
Yeah, it's the one you'd sent over.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So I just look to you, Dan.
Any open issues, Dan, that you know, aware of?
No, I, I don't think so. I mean, I, I just made red line edits to the waiver list. I don't, we haven't discussed that in a, in a month or so, but I'll just clean this up. And we can probably print it, can we print it tonight?
Sure.
So.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I feel like this is the second time we're going over them and I'm, I'm, I was expecting all these.
Okay. Well, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to either close the public hearing and/or close the public hearing and, or approve, and approve the conditions with waivers.
Should we approve before we close the hearing or approve after we close the hearing?
I would close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
And then we do the vote.
And then take a vote to issue the comprehensive permit in the, in the final form that was presented this evening.
Right, right. So I make a motion that we close the hearing for thirty-five Pine Street.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor or do we need a roll call vote?
Tim Martin?
Yes.
Joe Spassiano?
Yes.
Josie Cordahy?
Yes.
David Axberg?
Yes.
You don't have to do a roll call anymore. It's only on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
So I guess now we gotta make a motion to approve this.
Yes, entertain a motion to.
Okay, I wanna do it as way Dan suggested, though. Carlify for me one time.
So you'd make a motion to issue the comprehensive permit for the project in the form as presented this evening. That's it.
Anything about the standing, any standing issue, standing, you let them make a reference to the standing waivers or anything?
No, you don't need to because it's, it, you can, you can reference the comprehensive permit decision that was presented this evening.
Okay. Will I make a motion that we approve the, uh, the comprehensive permit for thirty-five Pine Street as presented this evening?
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? I think we have three voting members?
Three. Steve is, uh, voting and, uh, it's a vote, but doesn't, it's only three of them.
Okay.
The three of you.
We appreciate all your, we appreciate all your influence of this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's a vote.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time on this. So Rich, you'll, once it's all filed with the town clerk, you just send me a copy, let me know?
Yep. And we'll send you a copy once the stamp.
All right, so I'll clean this up right now and then.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll print it off.
Okay, do you have business, or?
No.
I got some news to approve.
Oh, okay, got some.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much, guys. Thanks again.
Call out, I don't know.
I will.
Probably watch it.
Yeah, you might be, that's right. My pal, my phone's buzzing.
Good night. Take care now. All right, so I think next on the agenda, we have minutes.
Yes, was that June twenty-eighth?
June twenty-eighth.
Yes, just June twenty.
Right, yeah, so I did review them. Everybody else get a chance?
I did too.
I had a chance to review them.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll.
Go ahead, second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote.
I thought it was very well done.
Oh, yes.
So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, very thorough, thank you.
More thorough than any minutes I've ever taken, so.
Rich, do we have any other new business or old business that we should?
I thought we had another, I thought we had another team member.
I thought so too.
I believe we do.
Do.
Just not present this evening.
Not present tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I don't have any other business.
Just wanna confirm, I saw that, was the August eighteenth meeting still posted?
So the August eighteenth meeting has been canceled.
Okay.
Um, has been canceled on my town government as well.
Okay.
So we will not be meeting August eighteenth.
Right.
And our next scheduled meeting is September first.
September first.
Um, and then I, as far as right now, we only have the September first meeting scheduled, meaning that there will be no third Wednesday of September.
Okay.
I believe that's.
Was he Jennifer September first?
We've got a number of items coming.
Oh, yeah, they all got loaded up.
We've got three new applications and one continuation so far.
So it's four hearings.
Plus hopefully some more minutes.
Okay.
And then I believe Rich will be doing a town planner update as well.
I'll have a town planner update. Uh, it's discussed with Tim about doing a similar update I do with the planning board, like planning related things that are happening in town. I can update the board.
Right. On the hearings, I know they don't expect you to know everything off the top of your head, but are there, what are they, special permits, variances?
Uh, we've got two, two, two variances and a special permit.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Even when we clerk before the next meeting?
No new developments?
Need forty Bs?
Yeah.
No, no, no more. We're, we're in a, no, well, we're in a.
We're, we're a slump, safe harbor.
Yeah, we're safe harbor till next July twenty-second.
July, yes.
Till next.
Next July.
Very nice.
Yeah.
But unfortunately.
Doesn't mean one can't come forward, I mean.
Right, if the one came forward that the, the board felt that was, um.
Had merit.
Yeah, merit, you could accept, so, yes.
But that means we might not see Dan till next July.
There may be.
He'll miss me.
I mean, you, people could still do subdivisions. That's not a forty B.
Correct, oh, absolutely.
They could do a forty B.
If we accept, if we said.
That's right.
Yeah, if you accept it, gives you really a temper.
We could say no.
Yes.
We'll wait until July.
Right, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. But on a subdivision that meets criteria for being a regular subdivision, you can't say no.
That would go to the planning board, yeah.
Unless they require, unless they require a special permit or variance for something.
Okay, so we may, we can make some crossover there.
Okay.
Right.
So if you're interested, I have the draft September agenda.
Okay.
September agenda. We've got two twenty-eight Dedham, which is the two special permits continuing from, uh, last month's meeting.
Is that Gentili?
Uh, it's Leanbri.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then we have, uh, five Hanover Street will be coming forward with a variance application. Ten Old Populatic Way will be coming forward with one special permit modification. And fourteen Dryer, Shire Drive will be coming forward with one special permit. All this information I'll be sending following tonight's meeting. I just didn't wanna.
Right, right. And a special permission would be that, that we already have a special permit in place with somebody?
Correct, yes.
And they wanna modify it? I guess.
Well, the time ran out.
Oh, okay, so, so we just wanna extend the special permit time.
And then it, it also changed from the original permit, which was a, a renovation project to a demolition reconstruction project.
Still falls within the approved permit?
It's a new per, it's just, it's section.
F four B.
F four B, thank you. F four B, essentially the same.
More or less, does it fall in the, it, does it still fall under the?
It's still a special permit.
Right, but it still falls on the same, or is it now a special permit under another bylaw?
It's a new application.
It's, it's a, it had previously gotten a special permit for the demolition reconstruction, but the time ran out.
Okay.
So it's, it's a new, we're treating it as a modification in terms of just so that you have all the current documentation with it. But you've seen the, if you recall, it's ten Old Populatic Road.
Yeah, the, the, this sounds familiar.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, you'll get, you'll have to guide us through it, what our options are. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you can expect all that material to come next week. Because I'll be preparing all the notice of hearings and everything to follow, so.
Looking forward to the month break after that.
As a primer to it, just to give you a little bit of background. So originally it came in as a, just a demolition, well, no, it was a renovation project. So it came in as a, as a F four A.
Okay.
And then when the applicant got further into really deciding what to do build wise, it, it came up in terms of that it really ended up being a complete, you know, demolition reconstruction. So at last year, you had actually approved an extension for it administratively.
Okay, that sounds, yeah.
Okay.
That's familiar.
Bringing some bills.
However, technically, I think it should have been a hearing on it, which it wasn't. So we're having a hearing, so we're, so it's presenting to you as a hearing for what they wanna do and just tidy it up, so it's.
But in the end, do it to grant a new decision?
Yeah, so it'll be a new decision.
All right, so it's actually a new application and new decision.
It's a new application. It's just being treated as a modification.
Okay.
But the old approvals has passed.
Essentially the same thing, yeah.
Right, right, the old one, we're just treating it like a fresh hearing and decision.
Okay, got it.
They were adding a second floor to that structure?
Yeah, it's a.
From what I remember, yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's a two.
At this point, it's gonna be a raise and rebuild.
Yeah, raise and rebuild.
Raise the roof?
No, no, I mean. Raise means destroy.
Oh, okay.
Destruct.
Yeah.
Probably even the new foundation, everything.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That will be a question.
Yeah.
No, it is a new foundation.
That means it's a whole new footprint, everything, so.
Oh, no.
They stay within the footprint?
Do they really?
Yeah, well, that was part of the.
Eight thousand square feet, I remember it was a small lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's on Old Popul, it's more, it's, it's within the old footprint, that was.
Okay.
Okay.
Hence, that's why, to get the special permit, to do it, not any variances. I think as a, well, so two twenty-eight, I suspect it probably is gonna be continued again because we didn't really get into the, the planning board hasn't got into the technical review of it, which is August seventeenth. But was supposed to try to, the consultant and I was supposed to meet with the applicant's engineer to go out and do a site visit modification next week, so. If, more likely, it's probably gonna continue.
Five Hanover.
The five Hanover is a, that was a little more interesting in terms of it was a, it was a lot that was purchased from the town at auction. And as they started the permitting process with the conservation commission, they're unable to build a house and meet the setback requirements in terms of the wetland, the general bylaw for the town. So they're, in terms of kind of boxing, if you will. So they're seeking a variance from this board, trying to move the house closer to the street. So that was a little bit.
Have they come before this before?
They have not, brand new.
Okay.
So this one's a little, a little bit nuanced, so to speak.
Well, we let a deck, you know, only six inches from a property.
That's the president's, you don't wanna sit though.
I know, I'm just teasing.
So.
So I have, I have the application in. Um, I'm working, uh, the client is working with an attorney, so I, I've been in contact with the attorney to try to get some specific building plans of what their actual intentions are and not just the plot of land, but the wetland flagging. Um, so that it can provide the board with a better description of work and, and give you guys a better, uh, idea of what their intentions really are on the property.
We know about the abutter situation in that area? I'm just curious.
I don't know, it, it, there was but.
Sometimes people, you know, realize, oh my God, that property has never been built on before, it's about to get built.
Yeah, um, it, well, it was noticed in term, well, the consequence was a hundred feet, so not as far, but I don't know if there was really any butter. I don't recall.
Well, the butters get notified anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they get notified, which is noticed because it's ZBA, it's three hundred feet.
Right.
But as Stephanie mentioned, the application is a little bit light on detail to be able to present the challenges there, so they need to give you more information to show you that it's.
Yeah, I'm just surprised, like, when something's, doesn't look like a very buildable plot of land, suddenly becomes approached, suddenly the butters go, oh my God, they're gonna build something on something that wasn't built over the years.
Yeah, yeah, no, that very well could happen.
Okay.
Was that property purchased at the recent sale, the auction?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Because we've had properties come before, at least I can recall one more recently I came through where, you know, we couldn't help them. They, they had a property that they must have acquired that way and they just couldn't, you know, we just couldn't figure a way that he could build something.
Yeah, so.
I have to go back and look at the, the notes or something, but.
And there was, there's two lots that actually were sold at auction and one they declined and it's been brought back to town. There's no town water there either on.
On Hanover Street?
In the well. On well, so that does make it more challenging to site a house because you have to setback from the, you know, from the septic system to the well and then also then you're taking the wetland, you know, the wetland. So, um, so they're pursuing this, um, you know, if they don't get it, then, you know, they don't get it.
Okay, got it, okay. Fun, fun.
Yeah, so that one.
You can rest up.
Thanks.
And then fourteen Shire?
Fourteen Shire is, it's kinda interesting in terms of, uh.
Nothing's easy.
It's, uh, so the, so Transit X is the company who's partnering with Island Power and Light in development of pod, it's called Podways. Essentially, it's a people mover. Similar to a monorail, although it's hung below, unlike the monorails above. And they're pods, which would, which would transport four people. And they're, they're, they are solar operated, so literally you would, you know, so you, you got in a pod, the pod would come down the ground, you get in the pod and then bring you up. Yeah, actually, there you go, so you can see.
Right, right. But they're just gonna be a manufacturer here?
So what they're doing is they're, they are in their R and D. So they're before the board to do, to obtain a special permit to do the, so essentially it's, it's not as jazzy as that video in terms of what's gonna happen on Shire, but it's pretty cool overall. Um, so they're gonna, you know, they're gonna, two beams, run the steel girder across and then they're gonna have to test all this stuff, so.
But isn't, is it on their already existing property?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, it's, it's where they're doing business.
Yeah, it's already doing, so it's in the.
On Shire?
Right.
Well, assuredly.
Right, I know it's a, it's our, it's an industrial area for us.
Yeah.
I believe it's scaled down from the actual size.
Yeah, it's scaled, it's much smaller scale.
Why would it require a permit, though? I mean.
Well, because it's gonna be out, well, we'll be outside, it's not gonna be contained within the building.
The structure outside.
Yeah, so.
Fit within any bylaws?
It does, so research and development's allowed there by special permit.
Okay.
So that's where it fits in.
Mm-huh, all right.
So it's pretty.
Well, I see it's interesting. Well, obviously, it's interesting.
It is very, I mean.
Yeah, but this isn't to be delved for Norfolk, this is, this is something they're doing.
They've got, they've got proposals for almost every town in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, I wouldn't, uh, I mean, I wouldn't preclude Norfolk necessarily, say that's.
May not be. Passing by my house and takes me up to the train, maybe.
Well, you know, I mean, yeah, it's, I don't know. I'm sure I'm not gonna be around when this fully gets deployed.
How do you get from one, how do you transfer to the next town, you know?
Yeah, if this goes, yeah, my grandchildren.
They might, they might interlink.
Yeah, no, definitely.
That could be. Could you, could you hop on Seacombe Street and end up in, you know, Boston somewhere?
Well, the cool part is like.
Do you know what the crossover traffic is and stuff like that?
Well, that's what I've heard.
For a lot of cities, it's kinda interesting in terms, you know, they mount it, you know, it's above the pedestrians and then.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, I would imagine this to be a more urban, dense area.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree. No, that, that makes, that would be the first, but in terms of the R and D and the partnership, it's.
With their businesses, they do the R and D.
Yeah, yeah, so it's pretty, uh.
Okay.
So.
Something fun.
Puts us on.
Did they show how you get on and off them?
Oh, here we go.
Here you go.
There's a little.
Dude, there's ski slopes.
Yeah, I know, I'd rather do that skiing.
Yeah, you can nice up, up the mountain, get out, feel safe.
Yeah, I know. Pretty, uh.
That's interesting.
It's, it is interesting in terms of its flexibility, in terms of, you know, adapting to different.
I would just think that in the beginning, it still depends on what routes are available, you know.
Oh, sure.
How do you get from this point to that point? Or what do you, what do you have, like, it'll be almost like train stations where you load up, you know?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
The green line.
Or maybe they just emulate train stations in certain areas, I don't know, bus stops.
I think there'll be big, I think there'll be a big, um, need in terms of what a lot of areas that doesn't have mass transit necessarily, a good public transportation.
I'm still surprised we don't have a bus running down one eight to the, uh, rental outlets. That's always been the one thing I never understood. You know, the one route that comes through Norfolk, I just wanna rent them outlets and connect back to Walpole and all places.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could see something like this on college campuses.